Go ahead, Councilor. I'm gonna ask Councilor Thomas if you can be so kind to give up the invitation.
Thank you. You may consider following these statements for another opportunity to come for your home in person. Oh God, we accept your judgment of us. Anything that is here that is unlikely to be, oh God, we accept your rule. We ask for forgiveness of each and every one of our sins, our transgressions, our trespasses. Oh God, in the niggery violence, oh God, we accept your kindness of you. But need the right spirit within us. Oh God, give us the will to do your great creation, your good creation, oh God. Give us a desire to seek after you, to abide over the Lord, oh God. And fill us with fresh air with your holy spirit, oh God. Let your spirit be yours all round, you receive it on this evening. Let us be gathered forces from your light. Continue to make us followers, continue to live in the light of God, which you have promised for this city and this time. And Jesus, go precious and righteous.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor Thomas. To the citizens who request. Verizon, Verizon, please come over.
Good afternoon, I'll say good morning. How's everybody doing? So my name is Missy Caper. I'm Verizon's manager. With me, we have our solutions architect Chad, as well as our manager Brandon Rogers. We're here today to make sure that Selma City was aware of the different properties and services that we offer. Mainly being the public safety offering. I know that especially here in Selma, we're all out of Montgomery, but I know that in Selma also is a huge initiative right now to be sure that our firemen, our policemen, city council people, anyone who's working within the city to keep our cities and our citizens safe, that they be able to have what they need and hope for that to happen. I practically did their pamphlets, I knew that the time would be short, so I'm doing some information. But you'll notice on the right-hand side, there's information here about priority and remission, which is one of the things that we offer to our public safety users. And what that means basically is that you would be able to take priority on our network during times of congestion. Where that comes in handy is if there's a tornado, if there's a natural disaster, during drubie time, the city becomes heavily crowded with people. Your calls or your data transmissions will come before anyone else's, just because we recognize the sensitivity of the information that you may need to communicate. So that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about. As well, we have Network's fleet. I know that you guys are here, and some of there've been a few officer-related shootings or incidents here in the past couple of weeks or months. As of right now, do you know how do you find out where those officers are if they can't speak? And they've been injured? Can't speak? Well, that's one of the things that we help with as well, as far as being able, you would know where their phone was, where their vehicle was, in case of emergency and they can't speak. So there's a lot of different products and services that we offer, especially to our cities, counties, police departments, sheriff's departments, that we may not ordinarily think of. A lot of times people think Verizon, you initially think cell phones and tablets, and that's about where the bug stops. But it's not like, there's many, many different products and services that we offer. On the right-hand side, hopefully you notice that I put in the state contract pricing. That is the current state contracted rate. So that's not anything that you have to bid on or put out to bid for. On page fourteen specifically is where our public safety plans are listed. I mean, I know there's a whole bunch of papers, whether I have state law, I can give you the whole thing, I can't just give you one sheet. So on page fourteen, that's where this app goes with the pricing. It's on the left side.
Is your service plan a contract? If so, have any need to have it as a contract?
No, there is not a service contract. There is an agreement, but there's no early termination penalty. So if you got services on a person, decided on the twenty and that you didn't want it anymore, you can cancel it and it won't have the penalty.
Councilor Thomas.
There's no question about your services. I've done Verizon, I've subscribed for the past sixteen, seventeen years. And it's never amazing, even a lot of time I travel, and people accompany me, they will use my phone for their, you know, this tower. I've known the police, I've known Verizon, and we've been up. And I just wanted to say, there's no question about your services. I think as a subscriber, I think I can attest to the fact that there's no other, there's no other cell phone utilities created in Verizon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Thomas. Councilor Thomas.
Just wanted to say that we could look at the service provider, see if there was a contract, that's what I was asking. See if there was a contract with the service provider that came to us, you know, six or eight months ago, returning these clear contract, and then looking at the price on both, and see which ones are most advantageous for us.
Okay, also, do you have a contract to sell? Or do you buy to? Can you give us a place to package?
Absolutely, definitely, I'll speak out.
Can you go back to the?
And if you'd mind, too, that we would be glad to come back here anytime and talk with the police chief, the fire chief, remember answering your questions. As well, you do also have a demo program, so if they want to demo the funds and see how they work with their officers, we'd be glad to do that as well. And we can get you an apples-to-apples comparison as far as the quote is concerned. We just need to know how many devices you need specifically, and whether you need smartphones or just basic push-to-talk devices or whatever. But I'd be more than happy to get you that quote as well, so we can have a true comparison.
I understand that maybe this conversation need be held for two, three, five years. Get them so on the product, or everyone that's gonna have, you know, okay, it's not that they can use. I would highly recommend the content, people, people can help, both of us, while instead of, you know, in which our family is ready, the services that's new.
Okay, we absolutely do that. I know we got the info from police chief, has the fire chief been? Said yet?
Come on, yeah, I like it, it's a package. I'm gonna follow, that's why I asked.
Sorry, one more thing, just for those packages for our first responders in public safety. There is a truly unlimited plan, there is no throttling, no slowdowns, no limits to what they can use. Which we understand that they need to be able to use their phones when, in case of emergency, they don't need to be throttled or slowed down, or any sort of issues and that. So for those clients, we do offer totally unlimited through quick speeds and at all points in time.
You must be able to pass the time. Councilor Thomas.
Uh, part of what I was gonna say, Councilor Thomas, I said, to meet with our emergency team, uh, we do have the, you know, fire chief in place, and the, uh, special police chief will come in about twenty-something days, whatever, something like that. In a month. In a month. He will be in place hopefully if he has said yes to the council. And I also wanted to know, Mr. President, are we saying that, you know, our handler is the IT department? You are the same service handler? Or are you just the internet service provider?
Um, we are the telecommunication provider, so we would do internet if you wanted that, as well as your cell phone services.
And I meant to say internet service provider, just a service provider.
A service provider, okay.
So you would be just a service provider, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and, and Mr. President, so I would also say addition to, um, what, Councilor, you're off to be president of the IT department?
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
To be president is we are, okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
I think the best thing Verizon did is, look, I've worked with all the carriers and companies, and I've had a carrier, I mean, a subscriber, Verizon, for the last eighteen years. The best thing I've ever did was to do their contracts. I worked with other phone companies, did their contract. But that's the best, that's the best service that Verizon has done, was none of the contracts.
Yeah, I have to know. I mean, have a president.
That's a great you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have the university, you took the name of your company.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say this way? I know it's safe for tomorrow, but anything that's? Don't think it'll be tomorrow, yeah. All right, to the business owners. I gotta start again, all right. Census 2020, uh, we're gonna meet here on Wednesday morning at ten o'clock with, uh, Mr. Williams Scott.
This weekend?
Yeah, ten o'clock, and it's going to bring to, um, talk about, uh, Census 2020. It's gonna be very important that we do everyone on board. Top of just, just now, uh, also, um, invited the county commissioners, the judge from, not judge, but the mayor from [inaudible], [inaudible], and also the judges. We send an invitation to the judges and superintendents of the city and county. So let's start with Wednesday morning at ten o'clock here, with the last roughly about, uh, uh, seven, four. We start to be here to ask any questions. This time, uh, two for me now.
Are you gonna be on radio before this, uh, census meeting? About to, what, what day is it? Oh, I thought. Yeah, very appropriate, okay. Okay, obviously, I was gonna say, if you are, if you could tell the public how important Census 2020 is, um, that we get our population number correct, so that we can compete for, um, certain things that we cannot compete for now, because perhaps our number is inaccurate, or perhaps we brought this to the national to, um, assess this, um, if you could just say how important it is.
Also, too, I know it's a, um, number figure, basically, a very big figure, that each individual that fill out the census, they are questioning one thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars for each individual that fills it out. But if you don't fill it out, it's gonna have a reverse effect of losing one thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars. It's gonna be very critical with the fund cycle upcoming for 2020. I know our last census count was twenty thousand seven hundred fifty-six, seventy-six, seventy-seven. So, I'm quite sure, hopefully we have increased, but if we have decreased, that's gonna be very detrimental. Councilor Thomas.
Have they found eyes for the presidents, and sorry about the census, you want that particular portion back? And affect the Supreme Court, who they, they can't yet. Have they, have they, and of course, maybe Wesley, who would know this, have they found eyes?
No, certainly not. But like I said, hopefully, we'll be there. Is that Councilor Thomas? Yes, sir. All right. Councilor Thomas.
Really, if you got one thing, one thing to do.
What's that?
Of all of my [inaudible]. You must say that I'm still, uh, sorry.
I just, I just gave a brief.
You really did a brief, okay, but I, I need to, okay.
Yeah. I just gave a brief, probably. Yeah, as far as National Night Out, I'm gonna get with the, uh, hopefully, I'm gonna be helpful with this. It's gonna be the first Tuesday in August, which will be August sixth. Here with the police department, and also the DA's office, sheriff's department, fire department, and state troopers. This would be a night where, you know, community event, and with the Weeden Sea, with the Weeden Sea, uh, with the Weeden Sea, uh, with the water of Weeden Sea, this would be part of the community activities, so, community police. But that's gonna be August sixth, uh, probably at the [inaudible] six-day, where we try to have a, uh, with the community kind of, you know, the [inaudible]. August sixth, so six-day at the [inaudible]. Yes. That's on Tuesday night, I know, National Night Out.
Is that the real National Night Out?
Yes, it's the first Tuesday in August, and then I think it's the first Tuesday in October. But, well, basically, the border. But I think it'll probably be the best [inaudible] in August, because I've seen, uh, they got to say that, then if we get in October, you know, gets on earlier, then we would miss the food all season, and our school activity, so. August sixth is a prime, too. Right before [inaudible]. All right, thank you. Councilor Thomas, I, uh, I just gave you a brief narrative.
Okay.
About, uh, [inaudible].
Okay. I give a report today on Dallas Academy building. I know President [inaudible] had, he had already, but I, I talked to him to repeat. Look, the Dallas Academy building, during the time of the repair, uh, evidently someone had walked through and, and checked everything, and the insurance, the look of the insurance saying that, uh, the floor in the Dallas Academy before the fire, it had top on the floor. But after, we have to do the repair and everything, the floors have not been finished, so we have to. The city has a gentleman named Tim Culver with the capital of program management. He's the overseer of that, uh, with that contract, so he's had to go back. He would have to come back and, um, go back in for where a lovely lady in them had did the, the repair, because it's a part of the contract that the floor, that he said he would be back with me on this year, so he can finish up. Also, with the acquisition being put in there, you know, we said, uh, that we would like for all city property there, where we can have break-ins, uh, acquisitions being removed, we're requesting that, uh, we, we better secure with that by putting the iron bars back around, uh, when they replace them, which that is on the way of getting replaced. Ms. Yambler called me about a company that would, would be able to do, uh, she's from checking into that, uh, to replace the acquisitions and also get that, uh, the iron bars put around. So after we do that, uh, everything will be finished with the Dallas Academy. And I'll give you a report on the Smithman building. Tomorrow, uh, at nine-thirty, I will be going to the Smithman building. It's supposed to be, everything's supposed to be finished up with the [inaudible]. With the Smithman building, so, uh. Uh, go to the Smithman building. Uh, uh, everything's supposed to be, everything that will require to be done in the Smithman building, the acquisition, the, you know, cameras, and everything's supposed to be finished. So I'll go there, and I'm already in that very department to see if everything is finished up on there. Also, I have another problem. Councilor Johnson, uh, you might not be aware of this, uh, back in, uh, back in two thousand and four, um, it was, uh, A D, A D M came out, you know, the property. You remember when, uh, it was something, was it something you're supposed to do for [inaudible]?
I want, I want to hear it, to know.
No, no, I'm saying after, after, it was [inaudible]. It was anything that was supposed to do for [inaudible]. Okay, well, we got it. Back in, uh, I've been doing a little research on this, 'cause, uh, it's Compton Point School finished starting back now. And, uh, back in, uh, it was during the time of the former council was present. They bought the junkyard, and, uh, before they bought the junkyard, back in two thousand and four, there was A D M had did an evaluation on it. And to come find out, uh, they did a testing in nineteen ninety-one to, uh, whoever was the person that owned it, before it ended up with the city. It had already said that there was some problems, you know, there were some things that was, was, was in there. And we did the brownfield grant. So now we come to the point where school is finished starting back, and, uh, everybody know that over in that area where [inaudible] lives, there's a lot of, uh, we gotta deal with that. Henry said that, uh, the last time, he said that he was gonna buy for a grant to help clean up that area over there, that really needs to be where a fence, it needs to be cleaned up, or either, uh, fenced up. But it recommended that, that we come in, and somebody comes in and cleaned it up. Because that's an open area where the children in the school, they be, you know, going through there, they be out there. So we have a new principal now, that, uh, I, I told her I'd do all my best to get that area back to normal. You know, you got the junkyard, it's open, overgrown, and then on the other side, you got the city side over there. So this is a, a problem that, as me as the representative, I have the heritage, and, but I have got to, uh, make it, it's a public safety that I got to work on to try to get, uh, that area straightened out before school start. So I'm asking you, as the person that holding the funds, that, uh, we find a solution, because it was bought by our, our former council person, that we have to get that area cleaned up, you know. Henry said, if we get the math two money for, for that, then he can provide for the grant. So I don't know exactly yet how much it's gonna cost, so I have to get someone to go out.
Is, is that the A D M study?
Yeah. You're gonna have to reschedule.
We have, but, what's that called, the brown, the brownfield project?
But they can't, what, what they're saying now is that the brownfield is not gonna pay for it. We have to find the funding to pay for it.
Well, um, the funds I got now, there's, I got the contract finalized, finished the [inaudible]. Um, and, um, okay, I should get started soon, matter of fact, um, protect, you know, with everybody's position on getting, getting it worked on. Also, the, the contract I had earlier, generally, just for rocks, I don't know, but now this contract, I'm gonna be paid, but if not, they can be concrete, all within this double rocks. Um, so hopefully, within the next two weeks, the park should be cleared. Going down there last week, somebody, I don't know, I called the police department, there was a police report, uh, somebody ran into one of the [inaudible] and bent the fence, so they're gonna smash you, [inaudible]. So, um, uh, right now, I kinda, uh, wish the Council, Thomas, I just got the [inaudible] I wouldn't have to say it, did it from the beginning, 'cause I'm, um, got nothing to do with the [inaudible], but I'm still trying to do what she did, asking to go and finish the project, but, uh, but right now, the contract, I do have a contract with, I talked to the mayor, that I'm gonna get them signed, uh, so that park should hopefully be completed within the next, I'm hoping, there, there go two or three weeks, or at least next month. Again, I'll be prepared by Facebook, with what folks say, obviously, I'm gonna do what I see to be done, when it need be done, when the proper channel is signed, everything need be done. But anyway, uh, uh, I'm not sure, that'll be [inaudible] because I'll be up back as well. We put up the, uh, the kids that walked out in sixty-five, or whatever year it was, when they went on the bridge, also some benches and stuff have been purchased as well. So, um, that was a fine thing, like seventy thousand, I was waiting, can you please let me put the balance in, we're in that, seventy thousand. Uh, it won't be on [inaudible] in that council, um, because a lot of things, we gotta get the finished part.
Councilor, before you, uh, [inaudible], I was hoping that we can look to what we can find, if that's what the A D M, if that's what they find, we [inaudible]. If it's not [inaudible]. So hopefully, we can just fill us the ballpark figure, to see how much it will cost, uh, before something moves forward.
And, and, and it's, it's very important, too, because, uh, I can hear this, and, uh, it's my duty as, uh, the representative in [inaudible], because it's been three years, and, uh, this is something that's been going on that, uh, I picked up on, where they done been in there since, uh, nineteen ninety-one, and then they come back in, uh, two thousand and four, and we just did the brownfield. So I talked to Henry today, and Henry told me that, uh, if we find, first, I talked to him, him as well, if we find, uh, funding, we find out first how much it's gonna cost to, to get this cleaned up, and we can have the, uh, he can get a grant match, but we first have to find out exactly how much it's gonna cost.
Do we have a study of the A D M, city health contract?
Uh, I have a study of the, uh, well, I, they gave me, uh, I can go, go online and look at A D M, Alabama dot government, E-File. It would tell you the study, you could see the study done in nineteen ninety-one, and you could see the study done in two thousand and four. And, uh, we have the book up there, but I have mine, too. Anybody that wanted to see the book that was done on the brownfield, uh, they can, they can see that one, too.
Because I figured that this would be the old junkyard.
It was a gas station, old junkyard. Used to be a gas station, it was everything back then. It was a gas station there, you know. And, uh, they said.
Okay, you said [inaudible], so did they purchase that, or was they just [inaudible]?
The ways, the way the words are words, it's like, you really don't know, the only somebody can tell me, I was calling attorney nun. It's either, it was bought, or either it was given.
Maybe a tax give.
Yeah, the way, the way they have worded, we went and just read some stuff up. And he said, it could be either way, because he, the way they worded, they used to word it now. It could be either it's given, or it was bought. So the only somebody can really tell me more about it was attorney nun. At the time, he was the attorney. So I was calling him to find out exactly did they, was it given? Because if it was given to the city, and all these studies were done on it, and it was saying that it was, it was not good, so I'm trying to understand, how, how do we end up getting and spending that kind of money? We spent over eighty thousand, almost a hundred thousand dollars in there flipping the dirt, when you had this already in the file. This had been in the file already. It shows that it was, something was wrong with you. But then we, we took money and said that, uh, we was gonna make a part out of it. And we spent, we spent quite a bit of money there, just flipping the dirt. That's all we done, and the dirt turned over, and that was it. So now we stuck with it, because you got a school over there, and you have a resident where people live at. And we have to do something, we have to find a way to get it, the area, get it, get it cleaned up, or whatever, we got to do it. It's been three years. It's been three years.
I asked, but, because you read their, uh, across from Fish Farm, uh, the county yard, which they wanna give it to us for one dollar. I never, we didn't ever set that, because it's gonna take us two hundred thousand miles to clean it up. Uh, and I was waiting on, uh, the brownfield from Henry to give us, uh, we love Henry, but we don't want to touch it, so once we purchase that property from the county, it's ours, it's supposed to give us the right, so we never got that at this moment, so, Henry never got back from me yet, and then they were to study us on that, so, I don't know who made that move over there.
Yeah, you see, that's what happened to, that's what happened now, that's why, is, that's what, what's done happened, is that, uh, these, these files were in the book, I did my research, because, you know, I promised the school that this year that, uh, we were gonna do what we had to do, and, uh, and I went back and rebound my research, and I found out, so, well, if, uh, they done did, they studied on this this many times, how did the city end up with something like that, and, uh, we put, we poured that much of money in there, we spent almost a hundred thousand dollars in that junkyard, and we can't use it, and now we gotta figure out how we gonna clean up that area over there, cause you got people that live in that area, you got a school over there, and you gotta keep people out of there. So, uh, we need to figure out how, uh, well, once we get someone to go out to see what it's gonna cost, because church starts through August, and, uh, I had a meeting with the new principal, and there's a lot of things that, cause this school is sitting in the back, and, uh, I'm gonna do all I can, um, as a volunteer here, you know, clean up that area, uh, do a lot of cutting, make it, you know, so they can recognize this school back there. But I really wanna focus on this, this President, we need to, we been talking about this three years, school finished starting back, and we have citizens over there in that area. Uh, he told us today. He told me today, I've been up and talking, and he said, he said, uh, they don't clean up, it's the city, because it's their fault, we gotta clean it up. But he said if we match, he can do a grant match, if we find out how much it is to get it done, we have to do a match with that. You, yeah, you didn't hear me say that too?
Thank you, babe.
I put it all in, cause that's the area that, uh, I was talking about, it's bad, August, the first school start.
August, when?
It's in August, first school start? Well, that's, that's around the corner, that mean I got, uh, we gotta, I gotta do a lot of work with them.
All right, Councilwoman, um, this, uh, that's, Councilwoman Jones.
We emailed today from the, uh, I think we have, uh, someone in there, you know, we emailed today, to try to fix without the process, but we didn't have the process, not that it is. No, this is the, uh, first request we can move, in the big way, you know, inside, so, hopefully, uh,
Councilwoman, we just have our night, Councilwoman Jackson, I mean, Councilwoman.
Well, it's quite a long and subject, what you just said, uh, about, uh, Willie, about the lead. Uh, I, my understanding what he say is that it would be, uh, if that person would be able to, uh, normally it would take three more months, he say if that person be able to, you get that person.
All right, I have two, my number seven, so the two councilwoman's in case that may, and I will go to number five, you want to talk to me too?
If you're not gonna come back to it, I'm gonna wait, since it was your argument to come back to it.
Yeah, I'll come back to it, and I, I'm saying, number five, um, in light of, uh, and, and, and if it's true, I'm going to extend the, uh, youth conference deadline to let a few more young people in, in light of the announcement, that recreation could be shut down, that means we have more young people, uh, who are gonna be idle, who would have been playing ball or whatever, and not at the youth conference, they would have been doing something else, and so now, if, if it is true, that's what's being recorded, it's true, uh, the recreation is shut down, I'm going to extend the, um, can't extend it too far, cause I gotta order some things, uh, for the youth conference, um, at least in ten weeks' time, to give influences to, um, if and any of those people, uh, so just a couple of days, I'm gonna let a few more young people in, uh, in light of us having more young people on the, on the streets and on the blocks, uh, having nothing to do, I'm gonna extend it just a couple of more days, because as far as I can extend the first deadline, where you get the full regi- registration packet. You have a question, or?
Uh, Johnson, uh, Johnson, you need the first or deny, this is true, uh, I mean, then I'd like.
So, there's your answer, uh, so, yeah, so I'll extend it a couple of more days. And Councilwoman Johnson, you know any young people that maybe are at the pool or whatever, and if they're between twelve and eighteen, just let me know. And you let me know that particular group, tho- those are the young people I'm hunting, uh, the ones from the pool, the ones who would have been playing ball and recreation, so just let me know.
And also, you guys, kids that were, parents are looking for, you know, that program that Wallace had, it's over, and they, uh, wanna, uh, find, ask me if they have anything else open for the young people that can be a part of, so I ask you.
Yeah, so just let them know, um, they have, uh, they have a couple of days going to get the registration, it's very simple, um, there's no fee, and it's very, very simple.
So, what do you, what do they, what do they need the regi-
They're shipped downstairs on the table, and, and upstairs on tape, by both elevators, and if we rent it out, tonight, I just gonna put some writing every fee. So, uh, Councilwoman, help me, uh, know who they are tomorrow, if you don't ask.
Yeah, the parent, uh, I met a couple of parents, they had asked me, they was in, uh, Mr. out at Wallace, in the program, Mr. Willie had his summer, and they said they wanted to find something else for their, their children to be in, during the summer, and I, I told them about your program, but I didn't know when we'd be closing out.
Just till they reopen for a couple, a couple more days.
Couple more days, I did, I did pick two to see.
Okay, thank you so much. And then we have some, um, series, um, you all, uh, who were in town, may have heard about it, you might have seen it on Facebook, you might, uh, people might have been talking about Empower Music Festival, it was their first one, and it was, yeah, it was a success, but the, the level at which they produced this whole Empower Music Festival, uh, was phenomenal. Uh, sure, they got some kicks to get out, but it was their first one, and I just wanna, uh, since it's being recorded, say thank you to our very own NFL superstar, and our out of town homeboy, Michael Johnson, a young man, uh, he just loves to sit in a cell, so I wanna thank him, the MJ ninety-three foundation, and Maxima's Holness, uh, for bringing that to Salem, for those particular three days. Now, I also wanna thank Salem, we had a four-day weekend, Salem, and you did well, uh, without incident. And so I wanna say thank you to the city of Salem, while it's being recorded, we had, uh, a four-day weekend, now, I didn't hear of any incident, I just feel like that, and I, I tend to be in the know. Uh, uh, we are sorry for the family that was in the car accident, there was a major, major car accident in Salem on the day of the fourth of July, and we do pray for the families, I think, both families lost on that, on that end, I think both families, I, I think everybody passed away, if I'm mistaken, in that car crash. So, the, the, yeah, the reason I found out is that some councilman's granddaughter, I had just left him, we had just cut the grass at Block Park, we had just picked up the trash at Block Park, he went one way, we went another way, and then boom, the crash happened, and, um, that was right after we were doing that, so, yeah, I remember his family in prayer, the other family, I don't know the last name, remember that family in prayer as well, and Salem, thank you again for this four-day weekend without incident, and y'all know what I mean. Uh, I. I will, I will, what we do announce. I will, I will, I will, cause I appreciate that. And grand cousin, of course, I will, um, take care, I wanted to know the, the answer to the question that Councilwoman sure asked, and, um, if you could, um, see if they can answer that, I mean, I just, if they can explain that, and we can run it to us as quickly as possible, and we need to write a letter, and I was saying to them, say, hey, we need this, it's, it's a state of emergency, because I now have public safety issues in Ward Four, um, I have snakes, I have rodents, but I also have rats, so hot, it is not safe for young children to be passed by, uh, because we don't know what's, what's in it, uh, yeah, I was, and, uh, I've got trash that keeps appearing out of nowhere, so they, out of nowhere, trash keeps appearing, we, we cleaned the block park, and the trash came back.
They were born in this weekend.
And, um, in Ward Four, we picked up trash, and the trash came back, so, that to me is a hazard, um, the health department may call it a hazard as well, and so if you can tell them that we have a public safety issue, and we would appreciate them to, and that you should give us an answer, uh, so that we can take care of this, we would appreciate it.
That's the same, and a lot.
Yes, and public.
Public health, all be a lot.
Yes, indeed.
And I think Councilwoman, uh, before I move on, I think Councilwoman Jackson have a question for now.
So, we have our five thousand dollars here, which is not just for the, for the. Yeah, and I get on, and, uh, thank you so very much, but I can't utilize, um, a five thousand dollars, because anyone that has a budget to give it forward, um, I spoke to two people that were over sixty-three, but I rolled around for an hour, not fifteen, hour, twenty minutes on last Wednesday, with the gentleman who came right there, and broke over seven thousand dollars for one time. And I just, and I have to prepare a lot of, right, and so I'm thinking to myself, you know, is it advantageous for me to do, use that type of money for one time? And so I'm, I'm speaking, um, to a nonprofit to see if, uh, they would be interested in coming in at least once a month, next three months, with my five thousand dollars. Um, just because I just, I don't know how I could use seven thousand dollars, you know, of course, I'm gonna have to determine if I have any discretion there to put with the five thousand dollars that we would give to this one coming in one time, and two weeks later, we're gonna leave it down again. So, boy, three, it's not that I'm not working, I just don't wanna spend the money for this, um, I would do it with my own money, so I'm not gonna spend your money, our money, cause I pay taxes too. Um, and so I'm not gonna lose our money in that, in that way, and so, it's slowing down, um, Ms., Ms., Thomas got a kick for on hers, I was hoping it'd be more like hers, but, um, it's not, cause she do pay, um, two providers, but mine's a seven thousand dollars, and we have the rest over here, uh, anyone that has a mo, we'll be out of here this Saturday from six-thirty to eight-thirty, I'm planning on going on, on Salem Avenue, uh, and, um, pick up trash and cut, um, the right ways down in that area, and so I'm asking everybody, um, to add some more, come out, until I can figure out. Um, I did have a, um, local company to, to say to me that they were interested in pursuing a contract, they may, they be interested in helping out, um, they didn't know what, and, and they, and they'd be interested in helping out with some of the right ways, which I'm thankful for, um, so, you know, I'm, I believe the labor is worth it, they have, I just don't see how I could spend seven thousand dollars for one time, and we, we, we need to gain it to this.
And another thing, you know, how, how good I have with mines over there, is because a lot of my citizens, we on, uh, the area on the west side, we have a lot of city roadway, and then we have a lot of people that take pride in front of their, their home, and once we, once we cut it, uh, they see what different it makes, we did, uh, Summerfield all the way down L L S, we even got all the trash that the people did, throw out the car, well, I got the good one, and, and people see how different the community look, and they start, you know, they say, well, Councilwoman Thomas, you done got this looking so good, now we don't, we got lawnmowers, we got weed heaters, so, when we see it grow back up out here in the front, the ones that take pride in their home, they cut it, they gonna cut it, they gonna continue to cut it. But the only problem that we have with our, in our area, is the private lots and, and city lots. I have a lot of city lots in, 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 in my area, so, what we did was, we broke down the city roadway, we cut the whole entire, what's that, the city roadway from, from First Avenue all the way down to Summerfield, back. Cause you know when you found Summerfield, you don't have, uh, have one straight side off, that's off, but you have everybody else in the resident, they take care of it. But the bad part is in the west side of the community where I live at, and we tried to, uh, work together, which we cut the grass, and we had about like twenty lawnmowers that we, we fixing them this week too. So, if you get the people, connect with the people in the community, and show them, we can do this ourselves, therefore, they know the situation that we are in in the city of Salem, they know. So, work together, we can make it happen.
I was gonna say, in regards to, um, Councilwoman Jackson, um, and this would just mean, if you can take it, if you can take it down, and it's a safety issue, take it down. Uh, if you don't wanna use the five thousand dollars, uh, pass it over, and then let us pass all of these back to you, uh, when they often say yes, first of all, I applaud you, uh, I want to give Councilwoman Thomas all these anyway, regardless, cause I think she's at zero, um, and I told her this, you know, wait, wait, so when she needs it, she can get it, um, and hopefully we get it, yes, but I would say, if you can find your worst areas, and they can take it down, take it down.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to not do something, I'm just, I'm speaking with the nonprofit, see, they see coming, and I've spoken with them this afternoon, after I got off work, and they're willing to come back, and see, we think you, contract, I mean, it, it, it is done, it is something one, one for July, August, and September, that's better than one time, so I'm just trying to look at different, uh, avenues, so we, we can, I can do more things on the, and just that, and I, cause I definitely, I'm not gonna pass it down, even if I have to go by lawnmowers. And I have to cut it myself, and I asked, I asked Councilwoman, Councilwoman Thomas, she, she's been out every week, and so I, I asked, can I use her lawn mower, maybe this week, and we are.
I could.
Well, yeah, so we use, uh, we use lawnmowers that show up in Block Park, the two lawnmowers that showed up, we used them, and I, I think if we did, uh, all call, because everybody asks, I didn't know so many people had zero turnarounds, I didn't know that, and people go, yeah, zero turnarounds, we cut this for you, we cut this for you, I think we put the all call out, those lawn mowers, uh, will show up, uh, people will bring out, and, and then people will release you from the lab, and they can just show up and cut it, and then you look up, it's cut, and then everyone moves you from the lab.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, yeah, uh, Mr. President, um, that five thousand dollars is, is there, but, you know, you get a look there, to baseball field, there, uh, the swimming pool area, and it don't go like that more. My question, I got off live in the morning, um, which I had some guys cut it the other day, um, but I'm trying to figure out this, usually the workers back, but it's the fund debate, they work back, what we gonna need to do, need to work back? As we, if you're gonna write something to the center tomorrow, whether the workers can come back or not?
Uh, I'm gonna give, uh, a copy, I'll copy you all, but I'm gonna give, I present, uh, I present, sorry, Councilwoman Bo Lai, but basically, when you approve the budget, you approve them in the budget, so, it was already voted on, they're, they're, they're accountable already, so I, and that's what I, you know, I can say it in a different way, that they should be here. They're, they're, they're accountable already, so I, and that's what I, you know, I can say it in a different way, that they should be here employed and working, but that's not my decision, that's the mayor's decision.
But, um, what we need to go with is, is the money in the budget and the money available.
Only thing we can do is just provide the funding. If you're not, if you're not rich, especially, we, I, I, I just, just provide the funding.
Right, but what we're saying is, okay, but, okay, so we need to go the rest of the remainder of this, this year, I mean, I can't get workers back in. Some of my people on the song, the mayor, the mayor go with funds available. If you, if you give me permission, and, and give me whatever I can, I can talk, we need, we need to get these workers back to work. I mean, because, I mean, as long as we can maintain, paying the dinners as well, paying our bills, and bringing workers back, we can go get them, I mean, we can handle everything, and so, bring these workers back. Because this time, okay, when this time, when I, we're going to get some more money to get the rest, because it ain't a lab work for so long.
There's one person that can bring these workers back.
Okay, well-
There's one panel that can provide a link, this is that panel.
Okay.
The one person that can bring them back or not bring them back, it's, it's the mayor's, just go ahead.
We need to get with the mayor, tell the mayor we need the workers back to work, that fund is available, city council, if we vote and say the money is ready, we need to go. Okay, okay, good, we need to, we need to do something, we need to get the workers back to work.
And then also too, I want to include that before too, that's why I said, that some of the rooms would retire.
Yeah, um, I've requested from the extra, um, department, and I, I'll see if I can respect as much as I can, but I have to go with this one, so.
And you know, I, I, I'm going to come here, work with the boss, so, find a job, thanks for the call.
No, 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 fact of the question, um, this, this is not a job I have, um, you, you still need the pay?
No.
You, you still need the pay?
I, 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 I don't like that, and, and you give me the documents, I need to go down the hour, so.
The budget, the budget is-
I understand, but what I'm saying is-
This is my suggestion to what y'all just talked about, um, just now, uh, who's working, who's not working, blah, blah, blah. My suggestion is that you just, when everybody's in agreement to do, let them fill in our annual agreement, just do an all call of those who want to come back and say, this is an all call for those who were laid off to, who want to come back. You may have, you, you may have thirty, to come back, you may have, you may have sixty, who may have a job.
All right.
Or you may have sixty to show up, but if you do an all call to say, if you were laid off, this is an all call for you to return. That way, you have them stepping in, voluntarily stepping in and say, how about your job?
But we don't, we, we, that's good.
We gotta take what else to find out, who worked and who not.
Right, we need to discuss this, let someone move on, because it's more-
This is my suggestion, so now I say-
Okay, well, we need to do this, we need to, we need to discuss, we really need to move on.
Councilwoman Jackson.
You know, I'm-
I'm trying to make a motion for sure.
I'm, 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 I guess I'm bewildered, because we're asking each other what needs to be done, and the budget was passed, the funding was available, and the mayor chose to do something. Um, we looked at thirteen possible, possibly burning thirteen people, like fifty thousand dollars, and we opted not to, because when councilwoman assured, went to him, spoke to him, he did not readily agree, did not agree at all, he did not give him permission. That if he was given fifty thousand dollars, that matched and grew part time season, the workers there. And so, I don't see where is the council's responsibility, because we extended the olive branch, we've tried. You have funding that's not even from the city to open your hoop, and still is not open, but the funding is available. And so, there's enough evidence, proof is in the pudding, and he's not going to do it. And so, what we're going to need to, need to do is work together as a unit to get the things that need to be done, until the mayor comes to his senses, decides who wants to work with us, uh, and, and decides who wants to make an agreement. But I, I refuse to have a conversation with the team, go back and forth on whether we want employees, all right, you know this for more. We've been talking about that before this way, you came back, after she came back, and we're talking about it today. Stop having that conversation, let the mayor know the funding is available, because he listens to the, the meetings lately, he talks about it on the radio. And so, he knows that the funding is available, he's going to have to make that decision to bring them back. Because if we had the ability to make that decision, they would never, they would never go there.
Well, with Jackson, keep in mind also, this council said, they did not react to this way is back, now this way is back. Okay, she's back, okay, now this way is back, and I'm, I'm with this way, the way it said that we can get the workers back, that should never have been laid off. I'm realistic, we fall, we need to do something. I mean, we as a council person that's over the funding, you said we owe the funding, we are, we just got to figure out something, like, 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 councilor, I appreciate what you said, I'm looking to that, we need to see how the workers is available. I know, like, he read, read all of the cabinet.
As the mayor asked me, if he's okay with that suggestion, to do an all call, if you're laid off, if your job is available, come back.
Well, I'm going to be here on birthday in the morning, I think you get him a set of tests and provide some of that, I don't come down here.
Yeah.
I don't come down unless I have to, and I'm going to try, make money, it's on birthday in the morning, buy out and catch him out of the truck, because one thing I'm not doing, I, I, I'm going to do all I can.
Those are what I have.
Because we need fifty workers back.
Yeah.
And keep, beating them out, and we need to get our-
Y'all, we on the best for real.
Because he's-
Oh, councilman, um, the secretary guy asked, asked you on the last meeting, that you have an opportunity to present, the plan that you presented to the council, to the, to the mayor. You did, and then you give any type of response that made you feel that this was something that you were going to work with us or do process?
No, it is not, and let me, let me say this, let me say this. There is no one that has been any rigorous work, calling of doing things right, doing it in the right way. I am not letting our feelings get into, into the mix, as, as, um, councilman assured. He's trying to say, we got to go to the mayor. I think, um, even when there are these suggestions that we go to our president, he gave him, he's always come back. He went to our man with the thirteen, so we could prove that, I don't think that I would be with him, because I thought it was the most, the most advantageous thing for the city, you put it to his will. But our mayor was not.
I asked, I asked him that one question, he said that he hate that bring them, if the thirteen, they're going to be laid back off in September, that the fund will be gone. I was telling this one, because what would happen, at least they would tell us to work for a little while. So, let's go with him with the full workers, full time, back on, like, should they just try, I'm, I'm going to try and see.
Okay, we'll try, I'll look forward to that.
Right, I'm going to try.
Yes, thank you.
How, how, how is it that the funding would be gone when the council already budgeted it in account?
No, no, we in twenty thirteen, you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm saying, even if you brought thirteen, they're already accounting for this current, current year budget, so the only way that it would be gone is if the council voted, to prove those positions. The body positions, they're currently in the budget, so thirteen, twenty, anywhere up to sixty-eight, they were already funded.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I'm with you, and I, and I'm not sure, I was going on what he had mentioned in the past about, we ain't even paying our bills or something, because the funding has to come in.
And that's why we are where we are today.
Right.
I mean, you think about it, and I say this over again, he laid them off in mid-November, so you're talking about a month and a half, and you're saying you almost put two million dollars behind a bill. That's only averaged thirty thousand dollars savings per payroll, on average. I, give or take some room, but you're talking about ninety thousand dollars, first hand a million, we didn't earn a million dollars worth of revenue to cover those amounts. And even, even if there was tax coming in, we always, I say this again, we always had cash flow issues, was cash flow issue before I got here. We managed to manage our issue, and, and that has kept us afloat. We've had Saint James Hotel as a liability, we had a miracle that was months before reimbursed the payment, that we managed to do it, and we still managed to stay afloat. We have not had that much of loss, if you look at the reports I gave you, it reflects, we have not had that much loss in comparison. So, I'm just saying, if you just do the numbers and the math, I'll, I'll get here any day, and, and the mayor, I can go head to head on the numbers and finances. Because what I know to be true is what, what's in those reports, and the only way those variations could be is that my staff gave him something different than they gave me. Or that, that there was something changed in the New World Software System than what he had.
But we, but we got a great saving now, because employers, we, because we, uh, the employees-
Even more reasons to bring a person back.
Gas, uh, materials, parts and stuff, because workers have to buy stuff that I get from out of work now.
And, 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 councilwoman-
A, a great-
I bring to you more reason to bring thirteen back, but to go back to you, when you said five thousand dollars, once we can use five thousand more funds, we're going to go back to the general fund, and use that savings that you have, and reallocate five thousand more. That, my idea when I brought that to you guys is that you do something rather than that.
Right, I mean, I-
And so, that's what I'm saying, the, those cost saves that you're talking about, you can come back and decide whether or not you want to bring those cost saves again to repurpose it for the same reason, because it's not being used in this year.
How much we save is a month for the employees to knock that off?
Well, I'll do, give, I'll get, I'll get the number, but like I said, uh, payroll is probably like, give or take third, third, you talking about, um, that's for bi-weekly, so then you got a little for the monthly, well, not for the monthly, but a little for the weekly. But I, I'll give, I can give you that number.
And also, uh, if you don't mind, we, we save a lot on gas, we're not using, uh, uh, seeing as materials and parts and, and building things, and uniforms, and bridges, we save a lot, so that is, that, that conversation. So, I can't see why we can't get the employees back, I was over here, they're laid off, it's a no benefit, I'm stating.
Right.
And between now and then, we all, we never stay.
I mean-
And paying our bills.
It, it should occur unusual that within a month and a half, all the bills, he said million dollars behind, over two million dollars behind a bill, within a month and a half, all of get paid. I can't even explain that, I'm still trying to figure that out, I'm coming through the, uh, the bank statements, and, you know, going through regular sales report, trying to figure out how did that happen, how did that happen miraculously? If councilwoman assured, like, usual miraculously, how did that happen?
Well, I think right now, if everyone's saying, hey, we want the workers back, we need to have the mayor to please bring the workers back to the fund available, and we can maintain it, not to get it just simple. I mean, just simple, we, somehow, when you take charge, and I was here to drive my best, and he'd be in the morning, and so, I'm getting my week, and tell him that we've got funds available, we better get the workers back.
Okay, councilwoman Thomas, councilwoman assured, councilwoman basement, and then you go on to councilwoman, please.
I hear everybody what we saying, when the mayor, he made the statement, he said, it's his duty, not ours. He said he wanted that, he said on radio every week. Every week, he talking about what we say about doing, and what we say we going to do, he said that they don't get it. Our money, the day-to-day operation. People talking about bringing folk back, he said, I want the day-to-day operation, so respect him, I give you respect, I don't want the day-to-day operation, but as a council person that represent my ward, I ain't going to let our, let, let the area in the city go to the dog. Do what we need to do, to try to keep things going, because he has made in his mind, he said, he wants day-to-day operation. So, you can't force the hand up, he is the executive chief, we can go to, keep going to him, keep going to him, he said in his mind, I want the day-to-day operation, I decide.
Y'all, he running, he running day-to-day operations, and you can't break a little man hard, or this day.
There was no intention of, 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 of responsibility. I know, my position is that this council, uh, decision is to only make the money available, to actually hire, must come from the safety of the backs, and I think it's a very well understood. And, 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 and it's, it's way to say is, look something is better, nothing else, and I hold purpose. And, and unfortunately, I did not get a better reception with the proposition of, um, the thirteen workers coming back from the rest of the season. Maybe it had, had, had a better reception, maybe the result of those thirteen workers providing services for the city could have been well contributed in the merit of city. Maybe that could have led to, um, more progress, uh, bringing back those who are able to work, you know? You know, this, 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 this might have been changing, and this, uh, trading into my mind, you know, this is something that has to cease and cease. Our, our, our city is in trouble. And it's so sad and so unfortunate, that we got this big fight between legislative, legislature, council, and the safety, legislature, and mayor. Sad, but it's true, I really hate that that has been the main cause of this, this tragedy that has devastated our city. Once again, even if this council will say, bring all the workers back, how we get the money, it only goes towards this chamber, once the mayor, he don't have to be the one to, to, to execute it. And I hope, pray that he will be receptive to that, once this council, uh, and councilman Johnson, again, he's going to have a heart on a toe with our mayor, and I hope and pray that some, uh, some understanding could be there. And it's just waiting to see what comes out, particularly, and I wish, well, councilman Johnson, I hope and pray that the mayor will be receptive to what you want to bring to him, based on, uh, information that we had shared with other county, uh, available, that the funds bring workers back. So, if that being said, it's just waiting to see what, what good outcome of councilman Johnson, uh, to the mayor.
Councilwoman, mention.
Uh, well, when I raised my hand for, um, council, councilman Johnson, and, um, kind of just to change my voice, I tried, I'm trying to be soft. When I raised my hand, councilman Johnson and, um, treasurer was speaking about, uh, the budget, and we have these increases because of the layoffs and everything. What, what the treasurer was, was saying is this, whether we did or we did not, things are so close to the same, it should have never happened, because the budget number itself has been close to the same number as in the past, okay? The bills have been close to the same number as in past. She said we shut down the Saint James, which added to the pop, increase the power. Um, something else she said about five hours related, we get our money later. Uh, she said the cash, uh, flow problem, you gotta know how to pay bills when you got a cash flow problem. And she was saying that, I'm not saying anybody, I'm saying what she said, she said that, but the very essence of what she's saying is this, the budget has always been that. The number of points have always been close to that. She's saying that the bills have always been paid, and there has never been a layoff. So, it does hide all this other, I want to make a move about six to eighty-four. I would have to stand up and do it, because I thought standing do it, it's, I, I, I got a feeling, I got a feeling, because I didn't know he was like he is, but he's a bad man. Anyway, it's irrelevant, is what he said, it's relevant, because we have a Bible, a financial Bible. We have a financial Bible, we have a financial Bible that moves us and guides us, all of us. We say it every year around the same time. And in that financial Bible are the people accounted for, they're already accounted for, she's saying. And therefore, they should have never been released, because it's accounted for in her accounting, already accounted in, in her accounting, when we did the what?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just asking, um, I'm not trying to-
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I suffered a little shit back there sometimes, though, we have some issue calling me, called couldn't make paper, okay, but we, the money was held.
What she said?
I, I understand, but my point is, uh, we'll start people down there. We couldn't borrow the money, we could even, uh, go into some funds, we thought we were restricted, but the money didn't come, well, I think it's ways that it went to, uh, some other way it got the money, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Was that?
Yeah, but the money got, but my point is, how we got you at the point? Well, well, the, we couldn't come up with some funds to make money.
Well, this is what she also said, councilman Johnson, she said, also what she was speaking to you just now, she said that the only way it was different is that a report that was given to her was a different report that was given to the mayor. She said that's all right.
But I'm saying, but still, how can you even borrow paper, you have to take some, and oh, we didn't pay some bills that didn't pay, or how did that happen?
She was telling you cash flow, she's telling you cash flow, and she's telling you it was already applicable, and perhaps there were a, uh, two, was, 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 that's what she said, that's what she said, okay, yes.
Councilwoman, you heard now, the president, when you were there, you all did not borrow any money, because there was no need, because the money came up, right?
Yes.
You did, other than maybe the occupancy tax, which is part of general fund, once the council put it to move to general fund, where else would the money have came from? If you couldn't make payment or payroll, and they stopped direct deposits for that person, you didn't go to the bank to borrow any money, you did not. Money didn't come off of a credit card, but it happened when you're sitting down, getting ready to prepare to call a banker to borrow on you, and suddenly, when you get the banker, getting ready to get the bank on the phone, money appears. That's questionable. And so, you're, you're asking how it come, we've always, and I, I said, when we had this discussion, this, nothing typical, nothing- And so you're, you're asking how it come, we've always, and I, I said, when we had this discussion, this, nothing typical, nothing happened that, that was not typical, or what normally happens when we're close to making sure that, when we're close, that there's almost not enough to meet payroll for that week, because maybe we payroll falls on this week, but the next week, our sales tax revenue.
We just don't hear about it.
Well, you don't hear about it, he made a big to-do about nothing, because what my, county, county manager does, she moves money from one general fund pot of money, from another general fund pot of money, and she puts it all at, not restricted funds, general fund money that's in different pockets of city bank accounts, and she, and she covers payroll. You don't hear about it, because it's normal accounting practice, this is something that we do, we never had a catastrophe about it, because it's general fund money. We weren't, we never use unallocated, unrestricted, I mean, restricted money to cover, the money was always there. That, that should tell you, if you didn't go and borrow money from the bank, and the money came from somewhere, that was general fund money.
Well, I think that's what you're saying, because it's what you.
Because I wasn't there to, to go classes, but that's terrible.
But still, President, you didn't let us know how, and I'm actually saying, I'm just.
He don't know how.
Well, I'm saying, how? Okay, but the money that I paid came from.
Well, basically, the one thing we asked about was a grand amount.
Eight thousand, about eight thousand, two thousand?
It was a small amount, then it came from the general fund, and I think it was a delayed pay on sales tax, I didn't know.
So what we all know is, we, we taking the G D pay-poll, but we mess, so we're around, we don't know, I don't know, imagine, do you guys have a major, we, we got a reserve, not like.
No, we don't have.
We don't have a reserve.
We, under Evans administration, I saw him, until the potholes started occurring, sinkholes in Church Three and.
We had two hundred thousand, about.
Four hundred, uh, until sinkholes started, so we started taking that money that we had thought to accumulate for reserve, to cover those without trying to borrow.
Paying.
Paying, things like, things of that, things of that nature. But, but, but I'm going back to tell you about the money that you're saying, how did it happen, it happened the way it normally happened, it's not rob and pay-poll, we recognize we have some general fund money, sales tax over here, general fund money for something, another pocket, you know, here, and what we need to pull from those pools of money, that, that's what we do. There's nothing unusual, there's nothing illegal, but suddenly, in my absence, oh, we can't pay payroll, but let's talk about what we couldn't do. When I got back, I couldn't cash my check, my payroll check, because the account was overdraft, when I was out, the city gas tax account was overdraft by three hundred and twenty-four thousand. We don't talk about those, but those things are important, and why we, we need to know what, why.
I like to know why, yeah, why, yeah.
Exactly.
If we got money, I like to know your check balance.
But, but, exactly, why wasn't, oh, money was transferred, but you have outstanding payroll checks, that, that account should have never been uninterfered. But those were things that happened when it was out, so when you talk about why we couldn't meet payroll, we could meet payroll, the mayor created a stage for you to believe that we couldn't.
Sales tax, three hundred something, that was.
It was like three hundred something thousand, just.
That was him wrong, right?
Yeah, that's him, like, there's something how there was an error, was a, and they had to wait, and it lingered for a while, it lingered for a while. So, so what I'm saying to you is, there are things that really should be looked at, and like I said, I'm working, trying to repair record, but wrong one built in a day, I've been out for eight months, and I'm trying to figure it out, I'm still trying to do the day-to-day activity and figure out what happened, so I can have a better explanation, to give you a better explanation, as the wise mayor said, we were in dire straits.
Yeah, we able to put up a reserve also, now send the funds to the employees as well as.
But, but, councilman Johnson, you, you can put up a reserve, but the city is suffering. So, I'm saying, you saying put up a reserve, I haven't laid out purpose, but there are not, there's brands that need to be cut, things like that. You can put up a reserve, if the reserve, if that's where your value is, the reserve is more important, I was just trying to help, that's all I was trying to do is help. You all are getting hammered by citizens with citizens' concern, and when you came to me and asked for alternative, I was just providing.
And we need more resources, we are made to stop wrong.
Mayor, mayor, can I try to, so you said, you know, that's all you want to hear.
Well, I'm saying, we, we, we need jobs, something to say.
No, 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 that's, when you, that's all you wanted to hear, but that wasn't all she was saying. She was saying a stage was presented, and the city is suffering, is everything reconciled, the mayor trade?
I, I don't think so, not this one.
See, there, those are things she does not know, everything council reconciled and all these things, the stage has presented itself, all right? The stage has presented itself, she's working through to see what went on, why she was up in a lot of, I don't know, why she gonna.
I'm saying, but still, once said, we need more resources.
And you must also, you must also, you must also want to say in the same breath, that it is the same budget and the same people. You must also say it in the same, it's the same budget, councilman.
You can't continue living off the small budget, right?
Well, we, no one over here disagrees.
Right, that's why we need more.
Okay, but what matters is right now, this same budget should not have been masterful, manipulated, to create this stage, it's irrelevant.
Oh, 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 oh.
You were talking about, there's only two thousand dollars in the general fund, you got more than five million dollars in debt, I, I, I'm just waiting, I need you to put up communication, and let me know if that was false about that, and if I'm going to.
Did you have a copy of it, cause I was out, I don't have.
I was trying to find my camera. I had to find it. You have, you have, you know, you didn't get it, saying about.
Is it an email?
No, it's in, it's in the mail.
I, it was about two thousand dollars in, in the general fund account.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
And one hundred and five million dollars in debt.
I don't know, that check, but I'm going, okay, councilwoman, I'm going back to that gas card.
Well, that's what A.
But that was him wrong, correct?
Yeah, but there was some type of error that was made, and it took a while, I, I have to get a real state of the county manager to explain exactly what happened, but what I do know is I found out coincidentally, um, that it was overdraft, and it stayed overdraft for a while, so, yeah, three hundred, three hundred and some thousand. And this was while I was out, this is you, huh?
Yeah. So you mentioned error, uh, it's.
No matter how small, it, 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 it goes all over the country, over the nation.
But we have an error in place of three hundred thousand or more in unrestricted funds that has never been brought to council's attention, and no one in the finance department bothered to give council.
Exactly, and, and here's.
And we would only know it, because you, you are here to give us this information.
Exactly, and here's the thing that people have to realize, if you're an accountant, you understand, there's something that, that, um, is called, when you talk about whether or not it's an error, is it, is it small enough to be relevant, you know what I'm saying? You make, when you're doing ten with thousands of journal entries a day, if that's all you got for me to say I made this error, made this adjustment, then hey, so be it. But when we talking about major things that are occurring, um, when you have a payroll account that should always have cash in it, because there are outstanding checks that hadn't been cashed, and when you, um, y'all can see how less I'm making, but when you talk about a check less than two thousand dollars, and, you know, getting paid, and you can't even meet that, that's a problem, because that tells you that, them outstanding checks that's on that register, somebody spent into that money, tho- those are questions.
Councilwoman, I'm saying, we need to make a.
My first one is, can I take my second one, first one, my first one that this time, city, seven city schools, and the extra communication slash notification was point, um, who's the selling of the schools? And what I wanted to know, uh, president, and or ask, is, have we had an opportunity to speak with them about our upcoming budget and our conversation about these funds that currently being, that twenty percent, um, on the lesson, sales tax, have they communicated regarding, cause I know.
Something I know about, I talked to councilwoman Benjamin, I'm gonna talk to you about, I'm hoping that you get me, to be able to talk about.
Okay, cause I, I want to make sure that they are made aware of when they prepare their budget, and we're looking at our budgets, may come up with something, but they need to be notified, because last time, we, we made a decision, um, who wants, that, that gave them the favor, because they weren't notified, and so I want to make sure that the proper notification goes out, even if we, if the budget vote is not to take the funds back, at least they were notified prior to, um, completing their budget and adding all those funds back in. In addition, I want to know, have we heard anything about our two schools? Uh, have they turned it over to us yet, have they completed the repairs, what have they done, um, if you recall, I said something that made price to the school, you know, we were supposed to contact them, and we were aware that it was supposed to come back in a big order, um, we have a first school returned to us with a leaving route, um, they need to fix that prior to, um, turn it to the city, and I haven't seen today any notification, because that's one big mistake, she hasn't received any notification, and we need to know something, is, the big ones have been closed, um, for two months, um, have they referred it back to us, and, and has the, um, their attorney have taken, now attorney can take.
I, so then, I mentioned Fox, where I, they are trying, uh, working on something to, to go back, that's my last conversation, for, I have a meeting for, uh, the annuals.
All right, the, um, I'm going now, hon.
Oh, councilwoman Shaw, councilwoman.
Are you talking about, uh, the tax dollars, are we giving that to city, the back to the two, six, seven city schools?
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about the bill in there?
Yes, sir, I think we need to look at.
I, I'm not talking about anything, but educating about children.
There's some, there's some.
I want to let the school be the bridge, so we can educate our children.
I, I, um, I'm just saying, we have, in fact, um, we're giving the school, one point two billion dollars for the required amount issued, and we're requiring our state law to give them. We're in a situation that council, um, in just, we need additional revenues, um, we can't go to our citizens to ask for any tax, because we're not doing minimal things that we should be doing, and what we can do is, um, partnering with them to give them some program, um, and not even, you know, all of their receiving, nineteen eighty-two, they would not receive the twenty-ten tax that, um, is now giving almost two million dollars, they weren't seeing that in nineteen eighty-two, um, the city is not in the same position that they were in in nineteen eighty-two, and so all of things we be on the table, and something that need, we need to have a conversation about, uh, we make sure it's not, we made, um, the treasury making of something else that we could do, but in fact, we shouldn't allow them to make their budget, place their budget, and include these funds without at least having a conversation, in addition to that, we don't know what they spending money on. We don't even, and that's one of our clients, we're city funds, we aren't too, so where are our funds going, we can't, they can tell us, you don't know.
They're having an argument with the public, we need to come with that and research that, if we need some understanding, so we need more money. I take exception of entertaining all the needed resources for the education of our children, I think whatever cutback needs to be known, need to be used in other areas, other than any financial or monetary sources, or our children, in this position.
Well, councilor Shaw, I'm glad you have a position on this matter, but the fact of the matter, this is my business agenda item, this is my statement, and this time you are out, or the first thing that we need to do is send them notification, make them aware that we're looking at everything on the table, they didn't make us aware. I didn't get any notification when they were closing our first school, I heard it in the air, but what I'm asking that you do, I'm speaking, what I'm asking that you do is contact them, make them aware we can come to the table, and then that one point two million dollars, they may decide we want to keep five hundred thousand, and you all keep five hundred thousand, but there needs to be conversations around it, because guess what, they have cost savings, because they closed down two schools, that's repairs on two schools, that's maintenance on two schools, that's lawn service on two schools, and guess what, we do acquire additional expenses, there's maintenance on two schools, there's lawn service on two schools, so we need to look at what's best for the city right now, we can't look at what's best for anyone else, I'm quite sure, just like they got the additional tax in twenty-ten, they have my revenue sources. What I ask is that we send out the notification, because what I don't want to have is they come and say we didn't, we weren't notified, so that's my agenda item.
First of all, I, I want to respond, but first of all, I'm not out or speak on any issue in this council, if I'm out or I think we need to be, need to be, need to be, this, facilitator of this council. I still say, that if anybody looking at borrowing any resources and going toward education of children of citizens, can need to look elsewhere, we should find and transfer our children, we need to give our children the best education that money can find, I'm saying some of y'all got your children in public school, I mean, private school, yeah, I'm wrong with that, I'm a product of a private education, but, uh, public education is something that should be guaranteed in this city, in this city, and for this council to borrow any resources, borrow our children, it's shame on you.
All right, all right, councilwoman, I'm, I'm. You're out of order because you were speaking while I was speaking, and if he didn't make it aware that you're out of order, because I had to go, I will make him aware, and the fact of the matter is, you don't have a child in the city school that was put in a bathroom, and told that they were going to be killed in their stepfather, because he was, um, arresting and was ensuring the safety of other people, because he was arresting gang members, your child was not traumatized in that manner, and so whatever I choose to do with the funds that I pay, that I make, and I pay for, is what I choose to do, that's what's best for my child, so don't ever speak about, I'm a product, not of a public school, not a private school, but a public school, and so will my children be, but I'm not going to subject them to that type of scrutiny because of what Michael does, Michael has chosen that career, and so if any harm hurt, come to him, he has taken it all, but my children have not. So I take exception, exception to you even bringing up the fact that they're not in public school because you didn't have to be doing that, your, your child did not come home trembling and crying, saying, please tell my, Mr. Michael to stop, because they're going to kill him, so do not ever.
I'm not going to go, point, count, nothing to exactly in that matter, I did not personally attack you, I said to say some of y'all got your children in private school, let the shooting fit whoever is, I still stand by that, but for anybody to borrow the resources for education of our children and public education, I still say shame on.
All right, but council?
Yeah. Should he make sure he makes, go ahead.
We're both in the office, let's, we're both. Go ahead.
Okay, I want to remind, uh, councilman Benjamin, I want you to be aware of this, I, uh, you know, we had discussed before about the school sale, you know, the two schools that are closed, remember we said that we had, we found they, that they couldn't sell the schools? Well, uh, uh, someone may be aware, and they asked for your number, so I want you to be aware, we might need to look into this, someone's trying to buy your school, and, uh, they want to turn it into something that I'm quite sure nobody wants to make it, so look into it.
I mean, where is, no, we're.
They wanted to try to turn it into some kind of arcade.
Arcade, arcade?
And I hate when nobody, probably didn't know that number, that was called, you need to be aware.
Arcade.
So we'll get to it.
Isn't that a reversion there, calls, they come, they reverse back to the city?
Yes, that's what I thought so, but I, I want you.
But those are going to find out that it's come to us.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's all, I don't want to know that a school, she had other plans.
Well, I guess, councilwoman, I'm, I hope, uh, no, I hope no confidence. I have, this way, councilwoman Jackson, okay, uh, our assessment, police department assessment.
Yes, sir, um, the audit assessment was completed, or was supposed to be completed last, um, I thought someone else asked, but I haven't had an opportunity to review that. I think as we're looking at the budget, and looking at employees returning, and or, um, making sure that, that, um, fair amounts are in the budget, that we need to look at that assessment and determine, um, what they should be making, we should not bring them back, what they were making, since as though, we know now we're supposed to go do the assessment, they, they were not making, um, the amounts that they, they should have been making, so I'm asking this president if he could ask the mayor, or the.
I put it right.
The, um, hours in which.
Oh, they quit talking to you.
They quit talking to you?
They got five hours.
Yeah.
We get one from the league.
We did?
We got.
It came in two twenty-two broads, you were.
We got.
No.
So the mayor is, he's gonna make a request for Mr. President, the mayor got to receive a copy of the assessment, um, two twenty-two broads. Two twenty-two broads, a copy of the assessment came to the hall, and today, we have not received a copy, none of the council members, um, I think that assessment, and if we, maybe we can give our attorney a letter to ask that we have a copy of that assessment, I may not receive what, maybe, um, attorney Jones put there, but we need a copy of that assessment. For more, this way, when we're looking at the budget, we need to make sure that we're putting.
For more, this way, when we're looking at the budget, we need to make sure that we're putting the proper amounts. Because if we don't, we have the best Lord, and we're supposed to, we don't have another option. Because we didn't know information in this province.
Equality, equality in pay.
Right. And so if, if we can do that also, we have another assessment.
Oh, before you leave that, uh, Ms. White, if you have time, would you, uh, read the budget process timeline that we agreed on tomorrow? And put it back in our hands again? Even if you have email to us, uh, we can't win a agreement of timeline. We're going to start, we're going to start talking about this.
You need to know.
Uh, I think it's getting close to that timeline.
Okay, and so the next one is the police department assessment. We also have, uh, assessment, um, now the police department, you all are thinking this new two.
Which one?
This new two, I would only refer to one of, and this is, one of this administration.
Yes.
Okay, and so I mean, I would have, uh, probably reading them both, but I would like to at least know what we've been required to, uh, we're now about to retire our chief.
Uh, Chief Robert Carrion?
Chief, yeah, our current chief.
Yeah, Chief Robert Carrion.
Right, and I, and I think, I think, um, not only should we know what's going on in the department, I feel, um, that we also need to provide him with information.
Oh, you already have that.
He has a copy. So do you have a copy?
No, I have a copy, but I can't, I can't.
He has a copy, you think he can get us a copy?
Reed has a copy of the copy.
Right.
Oh. Are we allowed to get a copy? I mean, we, we set one inside. So if I, I mean, I asked you this a couple of weeks ago, I really would like a copy of the assessment to, um, see, we're, we're going to be in a position where we're naming as the chief. Uh, we're going to go along, I said, I'm questioning if we have a committee, we have any recommendations. But I don't want, I don't want to give them the form, if there may be questions that I want to ask, um, based on the assessment that I read, that I wanted to have a intelligent conversation with, you know, whoever, however, the committee, whatever the committee that you have, if you have the need necessary, I may want to ask you.
That's not, because, excuse me, my understanding that it was a committee that also helped with that process. You know, the, the study, our last study, that was input.
Who did that? Are we talking about Dr. Or?
No, not Dr. Or, I'm just.
Oh, we're talking about the company?
The company.
Okay, I thought she was talking about.
No, not about her.
That's why I said, I, I, I don't.
That's what I'm going.
I think they both. I own this.
I own, yeah.
And that was on the previous.
Yeah, that's on the previous. Yes, also, I was checking, uh, with, uh, checking.
He has phone.
I know he has a phone, Dr. Or.
He doesn't have a phone. I would consider.
Yeah, I'm sure he's been missing, uh, the vision.
Would you give the council a comment?
Yes.
Could, could we, uh, could we move forward on the five chief selection, I think, uh, such that, hey, and, uh, police chief? If this man is, I think, who is, who, five chief, he is like, and that would be the main. That's a natural five chief.
Oh, we're going to do both.
Let's say that.
Uh-huh.
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
No, we're going to do the five chief, I mean, the police chief first. And then after we through the assessment, I mean.
One at a time?
Yeah, one at a time. Because I'm trying to.
I think, I think, I think, certainly, certainly, the police chief is coming in, and I'm there.
Mm-hmm.
And certainly, they've got a board of five chief. I think we can go here and just put, uh, friends in motion to engage and move forward and have a five chief. We get this up today, to the council.
No, we're not. Uh, we have about five or six, I'm just waiting for, uh, two or three other people to confirm, to serve on.
Serve community for twenty-two?
Yeah. And we have, uh, two or three, five, um, also serve on.
It's Captain Graham, I'm sorry. It's, it's real quick, Captain.
Oh, naturally.
Is Captain Graham still, um, interim?
Yeah, he's, he's, uh, he wants to. Mr. President, on your latest public statement, would you please invite the three, uh, officers that was, went to the training? Um, because they kind of, because they kind of feel, there's some kind of, I had an opportunity to talk with him, only invited him. The building next to him, I had a long talk with him, and he was a little disappointed. I said, we've not made some decisions without even giving them opportunity to come speak to us. And I feel what you're saying, and them guys were, they determined that night, was the problem with the five guy playing next to my place. Uh, uh, and now that was fireworks, kids was shooting fireworks, and Bill got a fire. I could have lost everything, but they was there immediately. And put the, the three guys that went off to the training, that we were talking about, putting them back, putting them back.
Doing wrong.
Right.
Okay.
But this young man, this young man said, he wished some kind of, you know, that he can come back and speak on behalf of the role that they're playing. When it is.
Well, I passed by one of their, their.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just a one, I'm not sure what one of these, I'm just speaking of the one that I had opportunity to talk with the night at the thing. Now, the three of them, one you can't talk about. This guy, I think, landed here with a big burns, a bird, one.
I passed by him every day.
Right, well, he kind of want to talk, wish, you know, be good.
Okay, that's fine, okay, I will, I will. Councilwoman, uh, councilwoman, councilwoman?
Yeah.
Thomas?
Uh, when you, um, have your, um, can you, um, you have a committee, uh, where something that you talk about, you know, we want to be known and aware of, um, when you bring forth? Or can you tell, um, related to us sometime?
Probably not, I do, as soon as they confirm.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, I'm, yeah, okay. But I, I want to bring it forward.
Oh, no, 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 I'm saying, you're committed.
Okay, I'm like I said, I'm going to go ahead and say, one of the guys who served on the, uh, police chief would be Mr. Brooks out there. I asked him to serve for the, for the, so that I named police chief.
Yes, sir.
He has already agreed.
It means that, you said, search committee?
Yeah. That's going to be one.
So the search committee is going to become part of the committee?
Um, probably, uh, because also, I have, um, Val Jones, our former HR director, to serve on both of this, for the five and the police chief. Because, do you understand?
Yeah.
The dynamic of the HR role behind the, uh, police chief.
And she don't think that.
She know the name, she will get us in trouble. She never bring it, to serve.
So which councilmen will be, uh, which councilmen will be?
We are covering up to all councilmen, or they serve only in the courses that's sitting on the end.
Do come into the process.
Coming up to the process, and the process will be open to the community, um, on the end, uh, on the end, these days, of the five and the police chief.
Okay, and which former, um, which former, which I'm a police chief.
Both.
Well, okay, which four police officers and former officers will be on the committee?
Well, I have one coming out of property.
Okay.
And one, if you serve, and I have one coming out of city.
But you do have one from both departments?
You talking about Chief Allen, that is the chief here?
Did I recommend Chief Harris' state, or?
I talked, just what you hear them talk. That's what I'm, Chief Allen, I'm. Oh, yeah, I said, five or two, now, what, I did talk, two, ten, just. Okay, two, alright. Councilwoman, it's.
I would, I would recommend that some type of judicial decision, um, because seeing, not me, I'm somebody else. You know, great caliber, um, like a judge, um, this is trying to, not come here. Uh, but what I see important often is, um, I've seen our judge have to sit down and, um, call the chiefs from the bench because officers did not show up, um, to testify on any engineering or, and rain, you know, cases, things of that sort. And so they have a different, um, aspect of what they need to see in, in the chief. And you can be someone, you know, from another county, they, you know.
Well.
But I, I think someone, we, we look at law enforcement, of course, when you have someone on business community, victim that, that is, that are the councilmen, so now they don't form a law enforcement. But I think we need to expand it because law enforcement is more than just the pickup, it's investigation, and then going to trial, and the, you know, the success.
Also, too.
Because if we don't have great conviction rate, or we can get aggressive, no one ever shows up, there are cases, it's business, it's the process.
Also, too, you know, we're looking at the clues on that from the E C, and the second director is just made back in dread. So that's what we want, yeah, that's what we want, need to talk for about that.
That'd be awesome.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I got to look at my links, I have a police video, and so I have an opportunity to speak. Miss, Miss Wade, um, on last week, and I asked you to look at, and I sent you my email, um, several months ago. Um, the chief, Captain Forrest, had sent out an email to the council, saying that we should look at maybe paying for the vehicles upfront. Uh, we should not, um, finance the, for five years, um, the chief stated he did not want to do that, you know, problems. Saying that wasn't the way it went to go, um, since, since I did five months, they didn't do it for probably five years. But, um, so now we're looking at, we still need vehicles. And so, um, what I asked you, I sent her a couple of emails, and I said, do you know, I don't know if those funds are, are still available or, or not. But I, um, gave her what I thought at that time, which was April thirty, June thirty, and September thirty, um, to pay for two vehicles, um, each time. And then we have a full, we would have been able to purchase all six vehicles this year. I want to look at, um, allocating, um, putting those funds in place on our chief, um, DC, and he already has the funds necessary to pay. That'll be July thirtieth, August first, he can get the process started, so it's September thirtieth when we go into our, our, um, budget. Uh, the, they can be taken care of, and in two years, we can do like the sheriff department does, and then make funds available to buy sixteen vehicles. That's what the county does for the sheriff department, is they allocate a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, take it to you, buy sixteen vehicles, and they keep it rotating. And they're not financing, they incurred the thirty-five thousand dollars, if I told you wrong, at that time, for thirty to thirty-five thousand, that would be what they incurred, which.
And they drive, they help somebody.
Excuse me?
You know, vehicles, somebody, and helps.
And he was looking at, um, the utility vehicles, um, the four.
Is that about the county, which towards?
The court, yeah. County stores.
Okay.
But I mean, you can speak with, I mean, Sheriff Brown, and see, see if he would, um, be willing to, you know, what that actually do. But I just thought, having that question, the chief bring when he gets here, so he definitely have to come back, and they can stop, um, coming to his way. Ask him, sign right here, sign right here, sign right here, and he already in the line.
Okay, then, councilwoman, Ben.
Um, what, what are you saying, having this, um, because you, you need to wait for Chief Green to get here to purchase any vehicle? Are you saying have a process in place, Ira? What are you saying?
I'm saying have a fund, like.
Have a, make the funds available, and then wait on him?
Wait on him. Say, when he's ready, day one, he, he knows he has two thousand dollars.
Okay.
For him to purchase a vehicle, because if he gets there inside, we don't need to do vehicles, that's all a smokescreen. But I think, um, as before, if we know it's, he has to, the gout, you know, so he can actually go there and purchase.
Right, councilwoman, turn it down, going to.
I mean, I would.
Confiscation.
Miss Wade?
Miss Wade, I want to ask you a question. Help, before the chief call you, help, did, did we help, did we purchase any, um, vehicles lately?
Yeah, I think you.
That I want to ask you.
I think it's been in the past two years, maybe about, um, six vehicles. We purchased some out of traffic, red light traffic, purchased some out of junk funds, and I think a, um, couple of years before that, it was three. So we have, we have been replacing fleet, but just at a very slow rate in comparison to what.
I'm saying recently, I'm saying recently, have we purchased any?
Like as in the past few months?
Yeah, right before, recent, and I say about approximately, maybe about, what, three, about three or four months? Have we purchased any new?
When was it called, clearly, it had gone through.
Exactly. And when was supposed to, it, it failed through, uh, because of. No, no, I was asking, at least I asked her, because then I could say two, two new, uh, recently. That's why I asked you, did we, we have the first?
Well, those are the ones that you purchased probably a year ago, you did purchase on.
Um, one of them caused, it was a cane, and they took the speakers off.
Oh, that's what.
Took out the police speaker, you know?
I know, I, I saw. I saw approximately, maybe about, I don't know if they are ours, but I, I have seen a couple of. My many three destination, maybe, have we purchased any?
We should have about six to eight relatively new vehicle.
Okay.
What about, what about the, uh, thirty-one, thirty-four, seventy, uh, who we have there? In Lando?
Maybe. We never got that, it's me, we don't make that.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah. I'm running this for Chief Green.
Miss Wade, would you, uh, you probably already got this prepared for mine. Would you, uh, please bring us a balance of the red light camera, and what vehicles are due out of it, so we can know the balance after vehicles?
Also, the balance of that YMCA ground.
Yeah.
But we cease paying the YMCA's, so, so, so all that money should be, be more official with the YMCA. Okay, alright. Councilwoman, turn it down, councilwoman.
Uh, Miss Wade?
Yes.
Can you tell me, uh, with the cameras, uh, with the, the, the cameras that we, uh, the box that we ordered? Uh, we need to find out where they, what's going on with that, because is it, is I being equipped, educated, let me see, you know what I'm saying? Enough for the, the new system that we're going to set up in the box?
I, I would, um.
Oh, you got to get somebody to come in here and do.
Well, I would reach back out to the Public Works Director, Stephen Hendricks, but what he said to me was that there was, um, some straps and different things that we need to, to, in order to get those boxes completely utilized, and some type of electronic board that the state had, and they was going to sense, have somebody to show him how to use it.
Well, you think, do you?
I, I don't have to.
Because those, those, those lights, they're out, um, because they keep going out, and, you know, um, um, you know, we had one real bad accident, um, on last year, um, how your, uh, your fence, your, your car got tore out. Uh, he tore, he tore, he tore three cars, and he tore the fence down.
Do you insure it, or know about this?
Well, quite sure, because the last, all their cars got tore up, of them cars.
I'm sorry, I'm being a little, but I think that's a whole for you.
Well, this guy tore everything on last street.
Do you know whether he has a, do you know the person? But I think.
Well, they got, they just have to report.
I asked them, but they said they don't have a, but I didn't know what, you know what date that was?
Yeah, because I.
I give it to tomorrow.
Uh, well, anyway, look, I asked Wade, because, uh, them lights, but them boxes, let me see, I'm telling you. Them boxes, they keep, uh, you know, you can't keep, uh, how did, the old people say in the old way? You keep going back and you trying to make some work, and ain't gonna work. Them nineteen fifty boxes.
I, I'll ask.
You keep patching, they keep going out, and, um, if, if we have to get somebody that can program them boxes, because he been there a long time. He might not, because he might not be computer skilled.
He's, no, he said the state was gonna, they were gonna have somebody to help them with that, and, and.
Well, can you find out how long?
I, I, well, I'll just check and see what the update, I'll, I'll ask him.
Okay.
Alright, councilwoman, Johnson, give the chief time, so we can, we need to, we need to get the insurance out of that ball.
He told me, we're being, going to that.
Alright, councilman, non-controversial, my.
Good afternoon, councilman.
Good afternoon.
I'm driving out of the back, and then I showed up, and I said, you know that, two people fell down twenty-two? He was getting in jail.
Like it's five.
Anyway, I, I put this on the channel, because, uh, I think, uh, all our wars within, uh, the lit. The mayor has not done anything in our wars, um, he laid off employees on bogus life, destroyed families, um, in disrespecting the dead in the cemetery. I went to see my mom, Bray, couldn't even find her grave. Because Bray was so high, and, you know, and council, we, we need to make a statement. You know, either you're full as mayor, or you're not. You know, I just came up with a vote, uh, your confidence, uh, vote, so I'm confident, I'm doing a good job. You know, if you're not, you know, I think we need to vote on it. And, uh, because this time, I was playing, uh, with this guy, uh, you know, Miss Wade had told him to have money, he, he could have brought their grass color back, you know, you know, different, different departments back, to clean up our city. Um, let me tell you, two, uh, fourth of July, you know what I kind of spent my fourth of July?
Yeah. Yeah, right there, we know it's.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Sorry.
I spent my fourth of July cutting grass in the city, parks, went out to the stadium, people coming out there to help, picking up their family, couldn't even. I spent my fourth of July cutting grass in the city, parks, went out to the stadium, people coming out there to help pick it with their family, couldn't even, couldn't even sit at them, cut the grass so high. And I just, you know, it took me from my family to go and cut the grass, trying to make our city clean, so citizens can have somewhere to go and sit down with their family. You know, we are all taxpayers, I'm telling you, all of us are taxpayers, we deserve that or what we get. Supposedly say, okay, since you not picking up the trash, I, I, we need, you need to subtract that from my tax, my part of the tax. You know, you, you, you know, you're not cutting the grass in the cemetery with my mama and my dad, I buried it, I can't find it, you know? I, and without, you know, I paid for a plot for my family.
Can't find.
So if I paid for a plot, I can't find it, what, what the pity with my plot was, the city, um, keep cleaning, good, you know, they're not doing any of that. So I just wanted to vote up confidence, but you think he doing a good job, tell me, but what this man is doing right now, ladies and gentlemen, he, he trying to blame everything going on in the city, on the city house, and we all know it's a lie, we sit back here and, and don't say anything, you know? Hey, I tell my Christian, when Apollo, many for Birmingham told me, Popo was out all that late, so, I'm gonna tell you that, Jesse Johnson, I went out to Lakeville, I said, let me go find that Popo, this man put me on blast on Facebook. And I, I went out there, uh, must have shown them, they ain't out there, I'm telling you, and, and what was I did, they fit now, somebody must have fixed it. Okay, so you need to put in more.
I, I got a very small, I think I got about four houses, five houses, big, that's enough, rest of the building, so, they live in field.
Yeah, but it's, it's not what I was out there, I know.
Y'all got people.
Uh, cut, turn, what I'm saying is, uh, the mayor's a gentleman, uh, not doing what we're not wars, if y'all think it's, y'all think the mayor, y'all, but you know, fuck that, he, he don't care about none of us, you know? He don't care about none of us and we need a mayor's favor, and I'm gonna be quiet, I hope, uh, Tuesday that we can vote up and down, that we have confidence in him. If you don't want to vote, do like more people do, if you don't want to vote, leave out the challenge, we understand you, you know? Cause I'm, I'm, I'm there soon, this, this time off, and, um, and I'm gonna be quiet, I'm gonna, I'll get, I'll get emotion by this stuff, man, it, it is, um, it is ridiculous, uh, oh, oh, even on our street, just the fence slide or Concordia or Fifth Avenue, I'm cutting grass and a big water loss out there.
Oh, yeah, man.
I said, on my friend, he had a gun, and, and, you know, I told him, maybe he, you know, he gonna get away because the lung was mighty scared. So he went away, you know, he went back toward the, uh, the little, uh, what do you call them, thing, lagoons or whatever, or, or water over there, out there. It's snakes everywhere, I'm, I'm telling you, and somebody could be in the city, we didn't hold it loud, but we can say, you know, y'all, y'all don't know you're cutting the grass. Let somebody get bit by a snake out there and block off, cause of the high grade, I'm gonna grab somebody, you, you could, by the time you get up on snake, you, you get, cause it, it's no way you, you, uh, see him.
What bring the streets, council, is that, that's in the mice, and the streets is following the rest of the mice, I was ready to rest in the mice, it's garbage, and it's taken over by city, god, oh. I tried my best, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna get that guy out of there, and, uh, I'm gonna contract with somebody, I'm gonna use that plan, I'm not just to cut it bad, I'm, I'm gonna get done, I, I, because I saw a street over seven minutes, though I know it was a big shit, and he was, he just came from somebody else's.
Well, it was too lucky.
No, but I, I, I truly understand why the city is in a daily space, when you got the rest of the mice is coming to the end of this whole time, you know? The rest that you don't got, the streets that you don't rest.
But, but, I just, I just hope that we, um, put it to the home, um, and.
Is someone on the, the, the market?
It's not home, I can read it.
I look at me.
Um, 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 we, 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 we.
Yes, brother.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'm, 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 when we fresh out of the, 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 like, when we start our meeting, like. Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah.
We can take out what we want, we can assess.
Alright.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, Councilman.
Uh, Mr. President, I want to, um, ask a couple of things, and, and, so, first, um, the, um, the police video was, can we get, uh, use this, Ms. Wade and, um, look at, uh, what we've seen, we've tried to see if we can consent, I mean, it was Wade, um, class, I think the consent, you know, they could be done to go over, they can just say, hey, where are our vehicles? Where are we returning the city vehicles and we're, as we're looking at the way the process, this is one that I usually believe, I, you know, take it from, but I think they should be, they should be sent out to say, um, this, this is your communication, not our notification, that we're gonna be looking at all this for school.
I gotta be good first, yeah.
So are we gonna send out a letter?
I, I have a deal with it.
You're gonna talk to us specifically? Okay, um, the other two assessments, I'll bring them close to the party, uh, can we put that on the same, that, um, you get those items from there?
We do, um.
That the council can, um, so, I, I.
Well, I.
I mean.
Yeah, that's what I, I.
We can, we can, we can ask, um, our, our council, I mean, we do have, um, attorney Jones, we submit something to him, that, 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 that was going on by the council, the jury, the vote on Tuesday, July ninth, and then we won't, have the consent, I mean, we should already have.
We have a secret, have a.
Oh, even one, I just said, you know, it's gonna be two hundred thousand miles versus three hundred thousand miles, but you know, I know, love, love, I try to take them alive, I said, that I.
This is my first time seeing, my first time seeing this, man.
I've never seen it, yeah.
He's obviously.
Out.
I hate to miss it, I hate to miss it, but, um, the other thing I wanted, I mean, just, no, 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 another thing I wanted to say, I want to, first of all, apologize to council, to, to councilmen, for sure. But no one understands this much about, um, the cost, it is on family, that children for a party, um, hundreds of hours, to be in a dangerous position. Since we emerged, like, um, what is happening, we've got all friends in the house, we've got, uh, all kinds of regular police officers and other features that we follow, you know, he doesn't talk aside. He doesn't walk around with a, um, with a, a armed security guard, um, you know that they have an oven, and just in the last six months, with one of the council, uh, excuse me, DA is the black one, they've been shopping. Uh, and they have been, been wounded, um, and so, that is very serious when it comes to my children, um, it's very serious, I'm, I'm just, I'm just making a mistake. Yeah, I'm making a mistake with her, I apologize for the way I reacted, and I'm telling you why, the way I reacted, so this is.
What you talking about, really about, her kids were being, um.
No, what I made this statement, I wasn't quiet at her, that there goes, uh, they had children in private, they're gonna, I took them on private experience, so she was talking.
Right, and so I'm, I'm responding to that in a way that is less in passion, because I'm very serious about my children, but I've experienced that my children were in places, we loved them, and we loved people, it's, it's, they're my high place in nine-six, I'm saying always, and one of my babies, he was saying, I had to move my daughter and put her in town and spoke, uh, but my son, he was traumatized, traumatized, and you guys, his curse, I went to the school, um, they shouldn't have to endure that, they shouldn't have to, that, and if I, if it takes my last hour, to put them where they're, they should, I feel like if they're safe, and no one is going to bother me about being Michael, being my husband, or even some of the things that I do, or, or, I receive texts to my phone, I said, my name, about a year and a half ago, Jesse calls, I received a text, three in my, you all didn't know, I didn't bring it to the forefront. But that's very serious, and because I would take a stance that we need to look at all factors and all matters, as it concerns the city, it's not safe, that I don't care about, um, seven-six schools, that because my children are in, in private school, that I'm indifferent to, to what's going on. My, Jolie was a parent for three years until we had to take her out, and so I don't want anyone to exonerate, and I don't even think that should be a part of the conversation, whether somebody's in private school or not, the fact that the mayor is, that our first responsibility is physical stability of a city, self-city. And so we have to get all factors, we used our call from George vote, and you can vote on, and, and my voice may not be in the battle process, but the last client is that they weren't notified, so I asked this to be put on the agenda, for them to be notified. There may be something that comes up, but we don't ever need this money, and boy, that may be a partnership, that you stated, that there's something that you're working on, as I say, we need the one point two million dollars over the legal amount that we have to, maybe we can say, hey, you would take so much, we'll take so much, because we need, uh, but to, to, to suggest that because someone, anyone, some of you all may have children in private school, they're not in private, uh, private school, and to suggest that, and I'm, um, council, I'm sure I gotta say, um, private, um, private school, but to suggest that without having all the information or anything to put that out, I think is, is wrong, and is, is definitely inappropriate.
That's very clear, that's clear. Uh, you and I, of all people, you and I be different, you know, you ever seen that type of children, beat a baby, I'm sorry, the beat a baby with a fight, but we love each other.
Yeah, we love each other, I didn't see that.
Well, I, I, I think a way back, and the cause of the legal, this council, we all have that position, some of them, uh, are working for all of us, but for those who take positions, I'm sure they consider it worth it. I don't take anything pressure about any response to that, make my position, and I hope that they tell me, and there was no personal attack from you, because I make a comment about private education. Uh, you know, my position is, public education is something that we should all be, uh, more for our children, because there gonna come a time and day where we're gonna need it to be, we got drone in the paradise, day for the market, if we're gonna, that gonna be up there. We gonna be sitting on a porch on the front of chairs, be who's like, we're meant to do everything else, but if you have children who have gotten a policy education, you will be able to take the burden on us, and they will be able to take care of us and our, and go to need us. My position is, we should all be about that, and what else could that be done, we can be done in other areas, other days, the resource of our children, and I think there's some ways that we can cut back, other than, uh, the best, the education of our children. I stay firm on that, I'm not gonna back down on that, that it will, it will, it's possible to return it, which is, that's, that's good, I don't think we need to give, uh, for you to make, I don't take a person, I don't have a position, and I have a position, but if you're, you're from, you're from, that's, that's.
I, I took it very personally, because of those children, and so when you talk about children, I'm not gonna, uh, mother name, um, bear, sorry, um, I, I, I took it very personally, I think it's, it's not personal, and we can definitely move on with it, but I, I felt like it was necessary for me, I, I stepped out and just prayed, and said, God, give me reason in this situation. That there are circumstances, that children are in a position that, that may not be safe, that's just the bottom line, um, because of all the factors, and you have to do what's necessary, which, whatever came up on the council, I, I made that decision, because of looking at myself, um, and having these problems, I, I, I.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm speaking more.
I was ready.
I need you to, uh, you know what I need you to do?
Yes, sir.
I need you, you know, Alabama Power, we talking about those trees, I come to find out, Alabama Power, now somebody did this here at, at, at City Hall, uh, Frank Wood, is this?
Yes, I'm there.
Okay, Alabama Power got, uh, some, they told me that Alabama Power has, uh, it's a company in the area, cause I saw him in my neighborhood.
That's not true.
Huh?
That's not true.
Well, they was trimming trees, and I stopped and I asked them, who had them out, um, and they said that, um, in order for them to come out into your, into the area for the trim the tree, they said it had to come from the mayor or, or we put in, so I asked, we.
Arthur.
Yeah, I talked to Arthur, Arthur, Arthur told me this is how it's, it being done, cause I asked Arthur, I said, well, you told the gentleman that you couldn't trim the tree when it was running through the electric line, he said, that it has to go through the mayor for like, you know, what, what Mr. sixty-nine Miller has, we have a truck with, we've been trying to get that tree trimmed for three days. He told me that, I told him I was gonna tell you tonight, to put in the work order, he said we would have to put in to Alabama Power, the area where the location is, they got, they have a contractor out here, they're working for Alabama Power.
We put it, the work request into Alabama Power or to the mayor?
Mm-hmm, he told me, I told him, I told you about this, and I talked to him, he told me to have you, you would have to put in a, a request to Alabama Power.
Okay.
Stating that the area located at, why, the truck out there, they got somebody out.
Tell you what you do, I only have to do this to the, to Alabama Power as a question, you give me the address.
They have two areas, they just need to trim from, from the line, and he told me that I would, that in order for them to do that, uh, we have to put in, I talked to him the other day, cause I seen the truck out, and I asked the mayor, I said, sir, I didn't, you get to come in the area to trim the tree, and he said that, someone, uh, put in the request from City Hall, and certain areas, it goes certain areas to trim, and he said you have, I said, well, I called out, I said, well, you know, I tried to get you to trim the tree, and he said, but you gotta get them to write a letter to, to him, to order for the truck to come out and trim it here.
Well, I guess what I do is email it to Arthur.
Yeah, Arthur is the one that made the.
If you can see that, if you give me the address, I can email him tomorrow.
Okay.
Maybe tomorrow you can text it to him.
Yeah, I can do, because this man, I'm gonna give you the address.
Text it to him, don't call him, I'm like, I did it.
You don't, you don't ask him, no way I did it.
I can't hear you.
You get a new phone.
Oh, you get a new phone.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, I had, I had asked, I asked, um, I had asked Ms. Wade to, uh, research, uh, vacation, can you, can you?
I'll be out there, I'll be away tomorrow, um, they'll miss their vacation and get a single out those, that are fortified for, for two weeks, for whatever they may, but they estimate possible.
Uh, so, 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 cause we got employees, they are, I'm loving them, man, huh?
That's all.
So, uh.
You'll have it tomorrow.
I'll have it tomorrow.
Yes, you will have it.
Yeah, we can, I, I'm not trying to say, anybody will, all they, they, they.
Those that have vacation.
Yeah, at least, please, give them one week, you know, then next, okay, two weeks.
If they're, if they have.
Yeah, they have two weeks, they have two weeks, yeah, this time, this time, um, so, y'all, if you could, go say it, and, and.
So.
It's long too, huh?
Yeah, and, 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 if, 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 if we go on tomorrow, how quickly can you give us that chance?
We can work on it, we can do it by Friday.
By Friday.
We have a time, I'll let you know, getting on the mountain, so my staff will see what's easy.
Yeah.
But it's Friday, Friday weekend, basically.
Yes, because he, I think what happened, happened is HR, if they're in at, HR want to go back and make them at, in order for them to cut the jam, so, let me just confirm with my staff tomorrow, I can tell you exactly what happened.
But, so, when you bring it up, you said, okay.
By, by, by.
More of this. Yeah, yeah, I'll, if, if she said, yeah, when I get it, I mean, I mean, I think, well, I think, fine, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, it just, yeah, I, I have to.
Fine, I'll tell you, okay, I'll have a problem, it's about.
Tomorrow, you know, my little family is.
Hold on, hold on, would you? You gonna work again?
My birthday.
Oh, oh.